Better. Some respect just to.
Probably quicker and less hassle to do.
Yeah.
No, that is. In fact, we ended up.
You know, lower the price.
There's probably a distress sale, so he didn't want to spend another three hundred for the floor.
Were there banks or lenders involved?
I'm not sure, but I think it was where the guy was into crypto or.
Not talking.
It just went down.
That's right.
So it's one of those.
I've never, never.
Put more money in.
But yeah, whatever you offer, you gotta take that into account.
That team is cruel.
And I think he paid five million, nine million. That's a lot. And if you're, I mean, you spent watching Holly, that's a lot.
I can hear up at.
There is, you know, you could put up with that if you could use the lake from your house.
Hey.
You know, but since you can't.
Didn't you get eyeballed by the highway apple lake? That doesn't sound good to me.
That would be a. Living anywhere on time is not appealing to me, just because you can't, you know, really use the lake officially from their home.
Sure is pretty though.
Yeah, really.
We have two more coming.
There's ten more.
That's my. Yeah, three's out.
Um, I emailed him later.
Which I don't know. I'm gonna have to break if he's gonna turn it off, but Morby says resign.
Did we ever confirm on eight o'clock in line?
Haven't seen this.
He said some issues.
That's not good.
No.
I think we're just covering, we're just covering to you.
Jeff.
I want to talk to you.
Have called.
Is it Charlotte's?
The three out that leaves four over.
That's what Rich saw.
Or anything and Sherry.
Something we can. So more than officially resign.
I just wanted to.
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to go see the other day.
After the questions are his and yours, so. And we can argue, which I guess we will for that here with the end, because some of the stuff you got one way.
I mean, it seems silly because it'll only be more months, but at the same time.
Right, figures what he wants to do and.
With the summer travel.
So.
And it takes four to four.
So we can say yay.
Right.
Or nay.
They should, they should.
They should.
I mean, it's.
Cause it's.
That's my rule instead of bias, but I don't make decisions.
Yeah.
So that's why I really.
Seven bucks.
Well, I mean, in this case, I recognize that either way is about the transmission.
Although I don't know how long. Application.
Well.
We're trying to have to.
I feel.
Publish it, but they have plenty of applications.
Yeah.
So anyway, yeah.
We'll see. We're all still like Charlie, so.
We could figure out what it is. Put a rope come right away.
Yeah, I'm planning to see you at eight o'clock tomorrow.
Put it in. Paper and have it done by next. By next.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Still are.
Depending on how, how long the window has to be, like that's to stay open for twenty days or whatever.
Exactly. Where he's live. Drake or Aaron. Not looking forward to any. It's only five years. Or whatever. Yeah, something. It's okay, we'll get it done.
Temperature's still hot in here.
It's really hot here.
Yeah, man's. If you want, we could do the work session. In the back room and we just put a note up on the door, if the area behind the chambers. If you'd like to do that, or if you're okay doing it here, you send me.
I'm okay.
Okay, alright. That's all needed to hear.
Waiting on.
She used to be chair.
Yeah, we still need one more, huh?
Rick, are there enough packets for you to have?
Yeah, for sure. Yep. And Charlie's on his way down, he's trying to finish up a few things.
The mythical Charlie?
Yeah.
I'm not gonna complain, he works really, really, really hard.
Already used a name.
Well, I would normally ask people if there's any expertise or conference interest that they want to just have this. I'm in the shop office, I told you today, right, because with my family, the files.
For these armor. Hold up. I think the legislative. Yeah, you're fine on that, yeah, you don't worry about that.
How much interest in that? That's great.
Yeah. Well, in real. It goes down quite a bit when you're dealing with legislative. So, but you, yeah, you can break, and the way our bylaws are written, it really gives a lot of discretion.
Yeah, I just feel like. Yeah, but it's not possible, people.
Yeah.
Assume something is amiss.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
Need to visit with. Martha in this sense. See if she knows anything.
We haven't met since the twenty fifth of February.
It's entirely possible, yeah, I think that might be right.
It's the two March meeting before.
I think that's right. And then we don't have a. Work session next month, so we'll just. If we're meeting, we're not here today.
I know I won't be here for the first week of June, the meeting in June.
Okay, that's the work session here. If that happens, right now, you're pretty much our only agenda.
Good. We hope it'll be quick.
So do we.
Yeah, she said Sherry.
Yeah, so Mark had replied.
Okay.
Heard also that somebody needs to be replaced, is that?
Oh, that is another question.
Yeah, so.
I think, do you wanna say that during?
Yeah.
The director reporter, do you wanna put that?
Yeah, that's what I was going to mention, but. Morby has some medical issues and so he's gonna have to resign. I'm not sure how quickly the county commission is going to replace him. So I'm just, I'm still trying to get feelers out on that one and I will go from there. I'm hoping they. Get him replaced before our next meeting, but we'll see.
It has to be posted.
I, we, we like to post it, I'm sure they'll post it and I'm sure that they'll probably say. You know, go back and look at some of the previous applicants who had submitted. See if we can use some of them. And so I'm just waiting first to get his, I said, I need your official written letter of resignation, not verbal. So he said he'd give it to me by then.
Okay, so to Meg, I'll just, I will speak of him as the three that are. Yeah. And then if you wanna say anything, I should have.
Yeah, so just kind of wait on that to see what. Right, you know, to get the official written, but I'm sure. I, I won't go into detail, but.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I'll do the jokes.
Charlie was eight, monitoring. Seven thirty, seven fifty, I'll bring it on.
Five?
Twenty.
I'm a bit of a look, actually.
I'll be there if I have anything.
I was here at five.
You were, you were the hardest working man in Shopee.
You were, when I saw your timesheets, I was like, Charlie, why are you submitting this at this time? I feel bad for you.
You're saying that, hey, okay, what were they?
Yeah. If we can get it done and.
That wasn't that procedure.
If we get it done in half an hour, we can do it. But it will probably only ten. Okay.
Oh, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, Mor, Mor is having.
You wanna do like even earlier?
You tell me when the two of you guys will be here, I'll be here.
So we'll see how things go.
As far as recording.
Well, the recording is showing. Just being able to do it.
I don't drink coffee.
I'm just gonna keep on adding.
For people to be able to call it.
Yeah. It's always a challenge.
I made a couple mistakes, for example, the residents.
Is that like?
That's an easy fix of the acre.
So they'll still be able to zoom in, but they won't be able to.
Substantive discussion.
I think they'll be able to speak.
That gives me Thursday to do it and then we can.
Yeah, she's trying, she's working on that right now.
Okay, my only concern is because.
Seven thirty is what I said.
I wanna make sure we have more for the meeting. Because they're, I'm pleased two items were so popular when they first came on, if people wanna talk, I don't want there to be a. You know, a, a legit, but a, an adven error that makes it so they can't speak. You know, cause that will only cause upset. Um, okay.
FYI, she's working on it.
Absolutely.
When you say these are popular as a good way or not?
No. Um. They, they were a lot of. In public participation. Yes, a lot of interest.
Ask. Love your feeling. But I just push on that. I need to message Mark and see if he's gonna make it. But seven fifteen, just to make sure.
Marta was doing it. The more we can get.
Teams, like it just wants to take over your computer.
Yes.
Like, if they want us to use that, they should probably make it less aggressive.
Shorter than we thought.
We know we have.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. He responded. Marta has a text into him, I have a text into him, sounds like some other people.
To the candidate. It's text.
There's eight minutes out. On that meeting today at eleven thirty. I. What did you invite? I noticed you weren't on there.
Um, which one, which one?
This is. And I was wondering, was it with the water providers out in Western Region?
Yeah, no, I, somebody said you went to a water meeting and.
Okay, cool, I don't know what that's about, but. Yeah, I was, it was with Gage and Stephanie and some other reporters and. And I just really, when I was in the meeting, I looked on the invite, I was like. Why is Charlie around this? And then I also thought, why are they having this? Because we're having the other one and we can't. And so I was, it was kind of odd because I wanted Felix there as well.
Did Stephanie explain that?
No. But I didn't have time because I was running to another meeting and so. But I thought it ended up odd.
Maybe this was their way of not interfering with ours. Just doing something different.
Maybe, and I, and probably Gage is realizing how overworked we are, he was like, I don't wanna interrupt, you know? You know, have any more planners there than necessary, so.
That's nice.
I, I don't know, but I haven't had a chance to talk to him.
Yeah, honestly, if, if she wants to run the amendment. Let's, let's give it to her, I feel Felix, let's give it to her and we'll both take credit because it's part of our goals. As long as it's done well.
That's not what I want.
We also need to talk, leave with Cortland as well, because. That, that update is supposed to be county wide. So how that affects the Alka Valley, the Alka Valley plan, we should discuss as well.
Yeah.
Considering the incorporation.
Yeah. Cause it would be nice if they didn't have to worry about that the first thing getting in.
Yeah.
You know, where they aren't gonna have the staff and the ability to do those things, so. Be nice if we could help out, I mean, at least have it done, but I don't know if they wanna have us done either too.
Right.
I mean, we're thinking we're helping them out and they're thinking that we're trying to sabotage something, so I don't know, I'll talk to Gage and see.
Okay, Cortland might be able to answer the question that I. To.
Place.
If we've got a water plan, it just happens to be in one of the two. Um, compliance with statute that we are, then we ask whether or not the questions.
Yeah.
We can chat. Yeah, state code, we, I think we talked about this, state code requires us to have a water element, if you want to plan it all. In the, in our general plan. Question is, but when we do a moderate housing reporting, we say that county's plan could be a two plan for the start county. And can do something with that water element. And not pushing through too much value where they may be incorporating. Or if they acted already better versed in to be argued out, where they're. I have a strategy. Certainly, they just want something turned in, right? Just turn, maybe it's good.
Yeah, right now, he's traveling. Thank you. I received one for the other commissioner, so perfect.
Thank you very much.
Eight minutes out, which at least, this is my eight minutes. Maybe three. So we can give that to you, my, where did you? The development agreement, US number.
Our president accounted for. Anybody have any questions for staff? On our two legislative items.
I'll be sorry.
Any question, Charlie, were you able to get the? Density units updated and changed for, I think there's Eagle Crest.
Yeah, the right ones in for both, both Eagle Crest and for COVID.
Okay.
What was the question?
Well, cause on Thursday was, they were both labeled the same.
Yeah.
Uh, what was the total density for Eagle Crest again?
What? About the forty, I know. Eagle Crest.
It'll be one minute and two, really.
So it's one on one for COVID, one ninety two?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I suppose, it's not new density, it's just.
No, understood, it, when the packet had incorrect numbers before, wanna check. Anybody have any questions they want clarified? Got anything? The language on, what was it, three point six, point six?
Yeah, see, I have that memorized, three point six, point six.
Because I can't memorize what it actually says, but. You do that, there's quite a process.
Oh yeah, okay, three point six point six, as far as process goes. We chat with you guys, this is very similar to the Bridges Development Agreement and one thing that they're asking for is. For the ability to. Have outside consultants come in, outsource resources come in and review. Subdivision plans and building permits and even do potentially building inspections. One of the things that we mentioned to them was, and they want that done, if it feels like the timing is getting a little bit too long. We've got. State law that tells us how long we can do certain things for building permits and for subdivision reviews. And so we've, the county have that pretty well dialed in, so we've asked that to be removed, but they mentioned, you know, that they'd like a little bit of protection when a new city is moved. To be able to continue to ask for those, something, so there's a paragraph that says if it's the county doing it, or if it's the city contracting the county to do it, then that doesn't apply. But if not, then that can apply if they choose to.
And it's different, than the language in the Bridges or?
So the, the language in the Bridges has also been changed to this as well.
And that was changed after the planning conditions.
Okay.
Yeah, and Bridges hasn't been adopted just yet, it's close, but that language has been changed to reflect this after discussion with the county commission.
Okay. So the language that we requested has been changed by the legislative body. And so this language reflects what the legislative body did in the last project.
It does. I think it's perfectly within you guys' wheelhouse to continue to say, no, we'd rather it be the other way. Just knowing that they've already kind of made a decision on one project in this respect.
The language.
You were.
We had a question, the language.
Reflect what we have reflected.
Correct.
In the Bridges.
Yeah.
But that's not what it says here.
No. Any other questions?
About it?
It's really not much to it, it's really just reaffirming what we've done and I don't know if you had the chance with the hundred and twenty seven pages of the staff report to actually go through the old agreement. But if you did, I hope you were just as confused as I was the first four times I read it. But. I pulled it apart, sorted it out, we got. At least two of the three projects that are in that staff report, or excuse me, in that development agreement represented here, Eagle Crest and COVID. And so having the separation of those development agreements, I think just for administrative purposes, it's gonna be nine day difference in the future, a lot less to argue about. Both from the jurisdiction's perspective as well as from the developer's perspective. The other thing is connectivity pathways, the connectivity for both projects are, are increasing, we're getting better from what is adopted now versus what's being proposed. And then the only other ask that I. Substantial ask or material ask that I, that the applicant has given is that grading work and. Site processing work be allowed by permitted use. Normally it's allowed by conditional use, the reason why is because this is kind of the old mentality of how conditional use permits work prior to two thousand and five. When it was kind of a discretionary decision making thing, we all know that now that a CUP is a permitted use with conditions. So rather than making the conditional use with an extra process, we just put the conditions right into the staff report. I've got a little bit of experience negotiating gravel pit development agreements and stuff like that, so I've, I've been able to go and tease some of the information out of those to make sure that. We've got somewhat similar standards in the development agreement for mass grading and for. The, the other kind of material processing or groundwork they're doing. The big thing with some of these kind of projects is if there's incentive, because there's a financial benefit to doing the work, sometimes the work goes deeper and longer than you really wanted it to. And so we've just got some standards and they're saying nothing can be for sale, so the applicant's just proposing to transfer it back and forth to their own properties or their own projects. Nothing can be for sale and you can't go lower than what your estimated rough grade is for your development.
And it's all that, and it's the same as the Bridges agreements.
It will be, yes, now it's not exactly the same, so in the Bridges agreement, I believe you guys asked for those to continue to be conditional uses or conditional use permits. But when we talk to the planning committee or the county commissioners, the county commissioners said, we're okay as long as we've got some good standards in here. So the answer to your question is, we actually refined those standards here and then put them into the draft Bridges agreement, so what you're reading here. If, if it gets, if the Bridges agreement. So what you're reading here, if it gets, if the Bridges agreement gets adopted by the County Commission, it won't be the same.
We're going to have to take it next door. Yeah, questions? Okay, thank you. I'll be done. All this order and.
The parole call this evening, we have Commissioners Frower, Commissioner Schwebe, Commissioner Barber and Commissioners Wampler here in attendance. Absent this evening are Commissioners Morby, Schuman and Burton, all excused. Has everybody had a minute to review the minutes from February twenty fifth? Do you have any additions or comments to make? All right, if there are no comments, then I declare those minutes to be approved. And moving on, any conflicts of interest to report on this evening's agenda? I have something that I want to state for transparency. This is Commissioner Wampler. When the developments that are on tonight's agenda first came twenty two, twenty three, I had excused myself with conflicts of interest at that time. I had a family member that was invested, they are no longer, so my conflicts of interest are no longer there, and I will be participating in tonight's agenda. So with that said, we'll move right into the legislative items. Director Frower, would you like to talk about the procedure?
You bet. The first item that you're going to be reviewing is a legislative item and it has been noticed for a public hearing. They're doing some amendments to the development agreement and if you'd like, I can introduce that item or if you'd like to. Okay, so this is a public hearing and possible action on an application to amend the development agreement for the previously approved Kobe development located at approximately twenty seven twenty north, five one zero zero east. The amendments are intended to help clarify the roles and responsibilities of both the developer and the governing body. And Mr. Uard is going to be presenting this item.
Hello, planning commissioners, thank you. What we have, as Rick mentioned, is a development agreement amendment request. In fact, both items on the agenda are that. They're both very similar. And so once I've given you one presentation, you'll you'll have essentially seen both of them. So the first one is the Kobe Ranch Development. Looking at the Kobe Ranch, this is the previously approved site plan for the Kobe Ranch subdivision. If you remember, I think most of you were here at the time that this was approved a couple of years back. They've got a number of townhomes that are going in kind of in the central location surrounded by large lots with ribbons of open space kind of going around. Just for context, a little hard to see here, but Highway one fifty eight is right here, Wolf Creek Drive is right here and it goes up. Goes up the road that direction. Next page shows it a little bit better. So this, this is one of the the further south and east developments in the Wolf Creek development in that neighborhood there. Which this stubs into, so this is their new development plan. It's very similar to the last one, I don't think any of the buildings or lot lines have moved very much with the exception of a little bit of swap right here between lot four and their detention basin. I'm sure that's engineering related. Let's see, the project itself has on the lower portion, so if I were just to draw an imaginary line right there. Is that visible? Yeah, right there, the lower portion of these larger lots is in the A or in the AB three zone, the upper portion. Those lots and townhomes are in the F five zone, so F five, five acre minimum, AB three, three acre minimum. The reason why we've got smaller lot sizes plus townhomes is because through that original development agreement, there was density that was moved from another project in Wolf Creek down to down to here, actually from a couple of other projects on Wolf Creek down to this project. So net density did not gain. It stayed stayed static, it's just moving around where that was. I traced the red line on their proposal, just so you kind of see where the multi-use paved pathway is. What's in the current development agreement only has about half, half a mile of paved pathway. What they're proposing here is about a mile and a half. Which connects dip, really connects the Wolf Creek Southeast. This, the Wolf Creek development, once you get down to that southeast corner is essentially terminal access development. That's a big problem with the amount of development that is in that terminal neighborhood. Meaning there's only one way in and one way out, that can be problematic. These guys will be providing a second way out, emergency egress connection up in here. But it'll be a full standard road that they're going to build. Which is great because you'll have a good connection, an easy and efficient connection from that neighborhood right down here. My suspicion, you had folks originally who were pretty concerned about people going through their project to get up to the outer mountain or whatever. My suspicion is that these guys, if 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 the road is open for them to use, my suspicion is they will use it more than this neighborhood will as they travel down to the market and down to the village more often. With that in mind, we've got some opportunities to get some regional trail connections. The black lines are trails that exist now. The blue lines are are long term plans for trails, so you have the power line corridor trail and you've got the canal trail. Both affect this property. The purple are trails that have been approved on adjacent development. And there is a good size development called Eagles Landing, even even though you might see a big field out there right now, it there is development proposed there, so don't plan on that being a field for very long. So as we, as staff looked at that, we thought maybe there's a little bit more opportunity for some regional cross connectivity for pathways. And so we took their proposal and we just added a few arms extending out to stub up to adjacent property orders. As you could see here, you got the canal corridor, there's already a dirt road in there, it's really just a utility access road. I don't know if there's any gates or anything for people to prohibit people from using it, however, because it will be going through people's backyards, there's a little bit of concern, especially given the size of those lots that there just won't be a lot of space for them to use their own backyard if there's a public pathway going through it. And so finding a way to route around and through, I think, is is pretty important for that, the future of that community connector. Okay. Just getting down to brass tacks. The document repeals and replaces the past agreements and permits memorializes density of those past agreements, no changes there. It adds better community pathway connectivity and adds a better street connectivity, I forgot to mention. The street here, their original approval just showed right of way dedication, but they're showing a built street to stub in here. And this stub stubs into the rest of the Elkhorn property, Elkhorn Ranch, which Kobe was originally part of Elkhorn Ranch. So we already know that the owners of Elkhorn have sold a big chunk for development purposes, there's no reason to believe that what they currently own would up, will not otherwise go towards development in the long run, maybe not anytime soon, but at least getting some connectivity would be important for their, for some long term. Good planning. So their proposal provides about a mile and a half of paved multi-use pathway, we're recommend, with our recommendations, that'll go up an entire mile to two and a half miles. It also clarifies site development and use standards. On that note, the current development agreement, if you did get the chance to go through it and actually pull it apart and figure out how it actually works. It applied the FR three development standards to the townhomes. And it applied the RE twenty development standards to the residential lots. But it didn't actually rezone the properties to those zones. It also applied the uses of those zones to this property. So for all intensive purposes, these properties are rezoned to RE twenty and and FR three with the exception of the amount of density that can come with it. We thought that that was a little bit disingenuous to accuracy. I wanted to make sure it was clear to the public that the movement of development rights did not affect the underlying base density. And and that the zone, the AB three zone and the F five zones are the zones that are prevailing. So to do that, we encourage the applicant to distance themselves from the FR three and the RE twenty zone reference at all, just move away from it together. And let's put together site development standards, project development standards and a list of uses that better reflect what is going to be happening in this project. So you'll, you can see that in one of the exhibits to the development agreement. I did draw, we, well, myself and the applicant, we did draw from what's in the RE twenty and what's in the FR three, just to kind of get a good base. And then went through and just struck things that just didn't make sense and things that that did make sense. And overall, you're not going to see a whole lot in there that's substantially different than what would otherwise be allowed or approved here. We also were able at that time to clarify the development standards themselves, the what, what are the setbacks, what are the, what's the height, all that. Sometimes when we say things like, we're going to follow the setback standards of X zone or the setback standards are this. For example, we put a definitive this on it, there's some negative consequences that can come with that. For example, does that setback standard apply to all uses or is it just the main use? And that's one thing that wasn't clear in in my mind from their original agreement is, is the setback standards that they have put in their original agreement applicable just to the main building? Or does it also apply to the accessory buildings, the shed or the garage or whatever? And so we adjusted that just to make sure it's very clear how each of those standards should be applied and very similar to how it is done in those other zones as it is. The applicants have requested that materials processing and grading be permitted uses with standards. Very similar to conditional uses, but what a conditional use permit does is basically you're still required essentially to allow the conditional use as long as the applicant can mitigate or substantially mitigate the detrimental effects as defined or as standardized in your code. So in other words, you can't just make up new rules to apply to a conditional use permit. There was a time back in the day when that kind of was a a standard of practice of just making up new rules based on the circumstances of the case. The courts have told us that we can't do that anymore, we can only have rules that are, we can only apply rules that are based on standards that we've written. So with that in mind, we went through and we just identified standards that should be applied for grading and for processing on site. Big concern, like I mentioned in a pre-meeting with grading and processing is sometimes somebody starts to make a little bit of money on that and all of a sudden you got a bigger hole than you meant to have. So we put very specifically in the agreement, not for profit, money cannot change hands for this and they cannot go below the rough grade. Yeah, question? Yeah, so material processing, so you'll have a probably have a rock crusher up there, the ability to get in screen, crush and screen so that they can pull out building materials from whatever's coming out of the earth there. Yeah, yeah, so if you were to scan on down to the conditional use stamp, or excuse me, to the permitted use standards that are in there. They have to provide a dust mitigation plan when they apply for the land use permit. And then from there, that dust mitigation plan has to follow minimum dust mitigation standards. Now, they can come up with a really cool method if there's some good innovative industry standards, but for the most part, you're probably going to see a water truck or something to kind of keep the dust down and keep things a little bit damp so that you don't have fugitive dust moving around. But on that question, the other big concern that a lot of people have, not just with dirt movement, but with development in general, is mud being tracked out onto the right of way and causing problems. And so we wanted to make sure we had some pretty clear standards about having mud and muck knockoff zones. So those trucks will kind of go up across the cobbley area that kind of helps things rattle loose. And then before they leave onto the right of way, they've got to spray it down with a with a hose or a spray station that they have right there. That's not very common when it comes to residential development, but it's a it's a good standard of practice when it comes to earth movement and stuff like that. Okay, and Kobe continues to allow short term rentals, I was a little bit concerned, I didn't realize that all of Kobe was allowed to do short term rentals, but we were able to dig into the record and find the minutes and and show that that was what was originally approved. But on Eagle Crest, we'll find, I think the exchange was no short term rentals in Eagle Crest, but short term rentals here, I think that was the the negotiation that happened there. So from staff's perspective, what's in the development agreement, I think is is really ready to go. I, we're recommending that you, you have the two and a half miles of asphalt pathway. They're only proposing the one point five, so if you just make a recommendation on what's there with staff, with the staff recommendation, you'll have the the two and a half miles that'll go on their site. So you've got a couple of options tonight, the applicant has asked for a decision in tonight's meeting, so it's either recommend approval or denial. The recommendation for approval, base your recommendation on objective findings, I put a few staff report that you can use, you guys can make up your own. If you've got additional things that you want to add in, like we're okay with this if X, Y and Z happens. So we talked a little bit about maybe some standards in the development agreement not being quite what you guys wanted when we were looking at the Bridges project. Feel free to add those in and we can report those to the County Commission so they can see what your guys' requests are. Oftentimes, the county commissioners, they'll, they're a little bit, they're a little more easygoing on a yes, but or a yes and than they are on a, on a no because. So the other option you have is to recommend denial. And if you do recommend denial, put some objective standards in there, it is legislative, so you don't have to have absolute definitive standards based on ordinance. But you should have some tie back to public good if you do recommend denial to the County Commission. And this is an item that you will be recommending on the County Commission. Not otherwise. Any questions for me? Great.
Really quick, because we're in our Chair Vice Meeting. We had all options. Our approval denial.
At that time you did, but then we, then we received information otherwise, so.
So tabling is off the table.
Correct.
Okay, Charlie, I do have a few questions, which I'm sure questions to as well. You had mentioned the main road that goes through. And we are talking about the road, not the Cape Town, right? Although it seems to follow. But you also said that the northern end of it was for the urgency. Well, is there going to be a crash gate or is that open? I was confused by what you said.
No, it's a good question, so the original agreement did call for a crash gate here in this area here. I don't think that we have that in the development agreement as it stands now, so if that's something you'd like to have added in, we could make sure we added it in there.
It probably travels people down.
But it doesn't work if there's a gate there, yeah. Yeah, as it stands right now, it it could be open, but if you guys are concerned about that, we can make sure that gate goes in.
But I'm concerned about, so we have upgraded to two point five miles of multi-use pathway.
In this particular case, that's actually a good question. This particular case, most of those pathways are going through open space, common area that the HOA will maintain. It's not written, it's not explicit, so we can have that be explicit.
Sidewalks are explicit to
Whoever lives next to them. Yeah.
But pathways are not
Not as much.
Actually state that explicitly.
If that's what, yeah, if that's what you want. I mean, otherwise, the county will always have the option of whether or not we accept those pathways and make them public. When it comes to plating, they'll have to figure out whether or not. Well, first off, if the county says, no, we're not taking these as public pathways, we want them to be open to the public, but maintained privately. They'll have to figure out how they're going to maintain that. So HOA or or otherwise. One thing to think about is long-term cross connection, whether we're up on the power line corridor or along the canal. There may be a desire in the future for either a park district or for the public to want to operate, maintain that, especially if the HOA isn't doing a very good job. But I think for the short term, it's probably advisable to explicitly state the HOA will be responsible for those pathways.
What's the county's outlook?
As a legislative item, it really is open for discussion. As a perspective of good planning, I think it should be open. I think if it goes in, it'll be a matter of time before it becomes open. And I don't think that's going to be because of what the applicant's doing. I think it's because of what the landowners to the north are going to ask for. A lot of times when you when when neighborhoods start asking for gates on public rights of way, it's just because they don't know what to expect. But once they see it in and they know how it's actually functioning and how much it actually benefits them. My suspicion is they'll be asking to take it down. And that's one of the reasons why I didn't feel it was a super important point to focus on. But I know that there was some passion in those original meetings a couple of years ago about that gate, so I get that. Other questions for me?
There's a note to that before talking about a number of things that like development standards that were in the original agreement that have been taken out of this. I wanted to clarify and have on the record that things such as fire protection, flood protection, noxious weed control, destruction staging and utilities, that they are not in this revised agreement as they are either not applicable to the project or there are already laws that so they have been taken out from the original. But each one of those is either because it simply doesn't apply or
There's already a lot of the covers. Yep, we weren't really putting, there was just a lot of language there that didn't really say anything more than the current ordinances do. With one exception, floodplain development, which to my understanding, there is no floodplain. I did check, there is no floodplain on this project and there is no floodplain over on Eagle Crest. So I'm not exactly sure why that was written in the development agreement. Might have just been somebody's copying and paste. Noxious weeds definitely, yep. Yep, it's already law, in fact, through the development agreement and the the earth movement standards, we actually have put noxious weed control, better standards, better controls on noxious weed control that way. So once you start opening the earth up, it's a lot easier for those seeds to invade. Other thoughts, questions?
I have a question.
Uh, we're not open for public comment just yet. We still are county commissioners speaking with staff, but we will have public comments soon.
There, I would average them out to probably two and a half acres. They've got some that are larger. Sorry, let me find that on the, oh, I'm on Eagle Crest, sorry. Some of these ones down at the bottom, we're looking at under three acres. Some of the ones at the top, we're looking at well over three acres. I think it averages out to be about two and a half acres per lot, excluding the open space that runs around and through them.
And maybe this is I'll ask. We have a piece of property that are to landscape and or terror and landscape. That much.
And is there?
What's the county zone?
Good question.
Type of situation by to maintain it without weeds to continue water anywhere in the valley.
Yeah.
Especially
So the expectation that we're asking is for them to hydro seed and put straw mat down. When you put the hydro seed down, you're putting in the 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 seed, the fertilizer, as well as the some of the moisture that will go in it. You put the mat on top of that and water that down and it's intended to hold enough to germinate. The seed mix that we're asking for is a native seed mix. So the native seed mix, once it's germinated, doesn't need to be watered. So as long as we've got those standards applied, I think we're okay. Now, it doesn't mean that they're not still going to be responsible if there is some direst load or something that gets embedded in one of those straw mats to go out and and pull them out. And that is written in the agreement as well. As as much dirt as they choose to move. So if they if they start scraping that top layer, there's a lot of dire load out there right now. So some of scraping that top layer is going to actually take out some of those weeds. But as they start scraping that top layer, anywhere they scrape, any land disturbance will have to be mitigated. So when it comes to where they will actually be doing construction, so along the roadways, you where the footing and foundation of a of a home will go. We did carve in a little bit of flexibility there so that they don't have to put the straw mats and hydro seed right there. But we want to minimize how much of that earth is open. Because once those seeds start blowing around, that's when the problem appears. No, no, it it's actually the opposite. It's considering the possibility that it might be a a big excavation or a big, excuse me, a good, a big grading project. We can get in there, we can put something in there that says earth, earth disturbance will be minimized to the extent possible. I think about how to put some language together for that, but we could wordsmith something. Not to my knowledge, in fact, I don't know that we actually have any ordinances or regulations about mass grading, which is kind of odd to me. Most jurisdictions I'm aware of have pretty, pretty robust ordinances about mass grading. Maybe it's just hasn't been a question that we've had to address. Yeah. It it just depends on what the desired outcome is. I think when it comes to creating the larger lot sizes or the area where the townhomes will go, as long as it's well managed. You've got a good vegetation management, good erosion control management. I'm not, I'm not at the persuasion that it's not okay to do. But when it's not great management, that's when things get a little troublesome. So great thing is, is so long if they are in violation of that standard in the agreement, they're in violation of the agreement. So there's a lot more enforcement mechanisms that we have through that than just the standard zoning. For example, if they're going to pull a subdivision application or a building permit and they're in violation of the regulations for mass grading, we would say, you you might be in default, you got to go fix that default. Now, the the process for default is we let them know if we think they're about to, if we think they're in default or about to go into default, we have to give them thirty days to rectify the problem. As long as they are actively rectifying the problem, like if it's a problem that can't be taken care of in thirty days, we'll agree to to do a little bit more time extension as long as it's done in good faith. Otherwise, then we go into the meet and confer provisions in the development agreement where we get together and figure out how do we resolve this? And if we can't resolve it, then we we've got all other remedies available that's in the development. Including code enforcement, everything from code enforcement all the way to judicial action. And the whole while, in order to compel action, we can be withholding permits. Yes.
Seen around that. A lot of dirt and
Yeah.
Serving
That's true. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. If if you guys want to add that in as a requirement for the development agreement, we can definitely craft that. Something to the effect of a minimum earth movement, only what is necessary for the site pads and for those those streets. I think that's a, that's a good way to go. Other thoughts, questions for me?
I have one regarding the existing pathway. Forget the actual maintenance, but it goes basically
From highway one fifty-eight pathway. Sure, it's on the highway.
To cross or park and do whatever, which this tends to happen. Here, I look, but I imagine that with the development of this property, there won't need to be some bad forth. Any damage gets done to that pathway is their language here that requires that the developer fix it on behalf of
Yep, absolutely. In fact, I think it's some pretty strong language. If you look at where the mass grading is and where the excavation is, we do have a statement in there about maintaining through not just the work on the property, but through the rest of the work as well. Number one, maintaining access for pedestrians at least five feet wide so that you can get a wheelchair through there. As well as we're asking them to go and video record both the asphalt on the street as well as the anything in the right of way, frankly, they will record that to document what damage may be there now. And then we will hold them accountable to returning it at the very least to the standard or the the state that it was in prior to the project being done.
That's so returning it to its act once the project is done. Rather than the route.
It also says that the county engineer can call on them to fix it at any time that the county engineer feels like it has exceeded its ability to safely accommodate traffic, including pedestrian traffic.
County engineer, because that's the way the municipalities are set now, but for the future, that would just transfer over to the
To the city, yep, city engineer at that point. You bet. U dot as well. It also allows you dot to call on that. Because it is a U dot road. Yeah, or or to work with us to to tell them, hey, you need to go fix this.
Any other commissions for Charlie?
Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, my name is Bruce Beard. I'm counsel for the project. Mr. John Lewis is here with me as well. Charlie has done his usual thorough job of explaining why this is a better agreement than you had before. And there's really no downsides to it. I don't want to waste anybody's time because I see there's some few people might want to comment. I will just address a couple of the issues that were raised, one by you, Madam Chair. And that is we're happy to make it clear in the development agreement that the HOA will maintain the pathway unless or until it's taken over by a government entity, happy to put that in. I I think it's pretty close to being in there now, but you know, we will make it as clear as you want it to be. And Commissioner Barber, we're also, your question about the north gate. We've been engaged in substantial discussions with the neighbors about it. And the generic request has been to keep it gated, but we are agnostic as to whether it stays open or not. That's a policy call for the council, so for the commission. So we're not going to go to war on either of those issues. We think they're both fair and reasonable and we're happy to deal with it. Again, I just want to thank staff. We've been working really hard on this agreement and the other one as well. And we think it makes a lot more sense to have this one simple project specific agreement. Like when Charlie said, when I tried to read the other agreement, I I always look at it as what's a judge going to say if he gets, he or she gets presented to it? And my answer was, I don't know. So we thought we'd made a lot of sense to clarify it. And with that, we'll take any other questions. Otherwise, we would ask respectfully that if there's any public comments that we need to respond to, that we'd be given an opportunity to respond. And we appreciate your vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion to open the public. Vote on that? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that is either in the audience or online that would like forward to speak on this item. Please do so when you are given the mic, please clearly talk into the mic, state your name or address and try to keep comments to around three minutes.
Hi, my name's Jan Fulmer, thirty-seven forty-one Red Hawk Circle in Eden. The folks, your voices dropped off and I couldn't hear two things. The one road, Charlie, with the red arrow, I think it goes into Trappers Ridge. Is that going to be just a crash gate or is it going to be an open thoroughware, thoroughfare? I know way back when, when these plans came up, the folks in Trappers said, okay, we can understand if it's a crash gate for emergency situations, but they, I don't think they were keen on being at a thoroughfare. Is that true? So what what is it?
George, we should probably address questions after.
Okay. And and I didn't click hear that. The other thing is I heard something mentioned about short-term rentals. I do remember the townhomes were supposed to be approved for short-term rentals. But did I misunderstand that even the single-family homes would be for short-term rentals? I did not hear what was discussed or decided. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nico Velgiati. I work at, or excuse me, I live at Trappers Ridge, right on the ridge line there. Five nine five six East Big Horn Parkway. John, it's been a pleasure to work with. This has been a long. You know, this started back in two thousand twenty-two, so just some things to clarify or I, you know, want to put out there. What will the hours of work be? AM to PM, including weekends? I think we discussed noise mitigation. There's going to be a lot of noise, so however we can reassure the neighbors that they'll do their best. And in what the phone number is it that we call if there's a a question? The top right corner of the plan, it had a circle. I believe that's an underwater or an underground water tank. So question is, will that be visible at all or will be fully below grade? Power lines exist. And we have an agreement letter with John dated October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two about certain limitations that the developer, the future owners, where they will build and how far close they can get to our property line. If the power lines are to be buried, it doesn't stipulate what happens. I would like, it's specific to the existing power lines. I'd like anything in relation to the power lines to be demarked with a GPS longitude and latitude number. For example, single-family homes are to be below the power lines. And any secondary structures, barns or what have you, could be above the power lines. So in those, you know, there's a, there's a nice drop off, right? That earth goes down from the ridge line and John has agreed to the development will, you know, those barns will be single-story. the development will, you know, those barns will be single story rooftops, no higher than twenty five feet. But for example, if someone was to in the future, future owner, bury the power lines, what's the mitigating factor? I think that's very, very important. Particularly because the larger lots, ones ten acres, several are seven, six. They have plenty of room and plenty of unobstructed view to push the to maintain those homes closer down to create a buffer. The I would love it if John would respectfully just reconsider because I think we had a gentleman's agreement. We didn't. We walked it, but we didn't like do the the yard walking. Two hundred linear feet from a trapper's house to the barn. We have, you know, probably a hundred and fifty feet with the barbed wire property line below the homes. And those, again, those acres, those acreages are pretty big, so I'd love it if the applicant would provide some additional buffer buffer as opposed to two hundred linear feet, particularly if it's a barn. Because a barn could have horses, animals, flies, things like that. And, you know, there's so much land. I think that would be a wonderful concession. I'm sorry here. I think we should clarify the STRs. The agreement that was agreed to in two thousand twenty two was for townhomes only. Three night minimum. It was not for single family homes. I could be wrong, but I pretty certain I am not wrong, and we have notes and recorded meetings, so we can we could all revisit that. The crash gate definitely was important. John in his letter said he would support the crash gate. But like his attorney said, you know, ultimately that's up to the accounting, so we have to respect those wishes, but maybe in the near term, before things get built out too much, we could consider the crash gate. And then lastly, a question I are there streetlights or is that required or no? Thank you very much. Appreciate what everybody does. John, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience tonight?
Kirk Langford, Eden, Utah. A comment, I guess, as Commissioner Barber was talking about being careful about what gets carved away and removing soil and marking property, et cetera. One other thing that's really important about this whole area is it is a drainage that comes down from Cobabs onto the flat east of the Patio Spring Road. And it kind of merges with what comes already off of Wolf Creek. And when Wolf Creek was originally engineered, there was a big ranch there. It was Clyde Sowers Ranch, and it went pretty much from the four way stop all the way where you start coming up to John's condominiums on the south edge of Wolf Creek. And then, you know, you start up to Cobabs, which is, you know, mostly rocks and and rabbit brush, et cetera. And right now, and and there's going to be down on the flat there Eden Crossing, which is a significant development. So I know we're only talking about Cobabs, but you know, there is no real borderline between all these other developments. But right now, a tremendous amount of water comes down off of Wolf Creek and also off of Cobabs, and it and it comes down into the flat, and it's no longer on the ranch. The ranch is gone, and it's no longer goes through the four way stop down to Pine View as it did historically. What has happened is burms have been built as people bought the property, some before Mr. Lewis had it. And I have met with the county and the commissioners, and I have videos from many years of how much water just rolls off that mountain. And currently, it's getting diverted into manmade kind of canals and ditches, and it gets diverted to the east. It goes down into a subdivision called well, I I call the four subdivision. I'm sorry, I'm missing my name right now. It was Zane Forest subdivision right there where the road makes a sharp ninety degree north of the general store. And that water just dumps in to Eden Irrigation's main ditch that serves a good portion of all of Eden that keep the farms and the open lands that I think people move up here to enjoy. I haven't heard anybody that moves up here because they want to be living with more homes, but that's inevitable, and I'm not saying we shouldn't be developing. The county had a project to capture that water, and that's without building onto Cobabs and creating lots and roads and more water that runs down because it's not going to be naturally filtered. It doesn't have the same arroyos that it rolls down, et cetera, et cetera. And that water, you know, floods Old Town Eden, floods people's basements. It continues down east to my farm. Farms just west of me, all the way to Browning's Ranch, which really takes you to Gertsen. And that's where that floodwater runs out of Eden Irrigation's ditch and into Gertsen. And the county was going to put a a pipe in the four subdivision and catch that water and run it out of the subdivision down where the new building is right west of the general store and bring it around and down the highway and into Pine View. But they ran out of money. And now we have a city that's going to be incorporated, which, by the way, is going to be responsible for all of the enforcement for everything that you guys put together here because the county will no longer be responsible for that, I believe. And that project is not going to happen between now and the time that the city incorporates. So the pipe starts at Pine View, runs up the road, past the old post office, and ends right across the street from the old general store at Four's new building. We're just going to be adding more water to this whole project. And some of the engineering, which is Charlie Ben, supposed to be according to whatever the engineers figure, it isn't working, and it hasn't worked. And everybody down below is suffering from that. And I think it would be appropriate to be more clear about what's going to happen with that water. And what the plan is when you get it down to the end of the property that the developer has. Because my understanding is, is you just can't run it down to your neighbor below you. That's not
Agreed.
Appropriate. Okay, so that's my comment to to put that in. And also just to be sure that there's no development up there that obstructs the canal or obstructs these Eden irrigation ditches that feed the agriculture part of Eden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langford. Anyone else in the audience tonight? Is there anybody online?
So Deb Model Mog?
Right. Yeah, my name is Deborah Model Mog. I'm at four eight three three east, three nine two five north here in Eden, and I moved here and I looked at all of the planning and and so on. Because this is my forever home. And things were changed drastically. Is this a done deal? Is there is nothing that can be done to to slow this down or to stop these projects?
I will be answering questions afterward. If you wanted to continue with comment or question, we'll listen.
Well, it's just a simple question. Is there nothing that can be done? Is this a done deal?
So we are currently looking at a revision to an already agreed upon development.
Right. And 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 the commission approved that. I went, I attended one meeting and never received any more correspondence, knowing that there was that. So the commission just kind of threw it in there and and approved it.
I'm not sure what you're referring to. These things were done back in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
Do you have any other further questions about this item on the agenda?
No.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else online? Okay. Motion to close the public.
A motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor? All right. Let's give to answer the questions that were asked.
Any one of them you want me to specifically address first?
So I've got some notes here, but Ms. Fulmer had questions on STRs and crash gate, if you wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so right now, as it stands, there's no specific reference to a crash gate. There's no prohibition from putting one up. There's no requirement to put it in. I think the gentleman who spoke, Nico, mentioned just relying on whatever the county's standards are. I don't know that we have a really big position on it other than long term, probably doesn't need to be there. But if we want it there through the duration of construction or maybe for the first few homes, I I think that's very well possible. Just make sure you have it in your recommendation.
Okay, and then Nico had asked about hours of work.
Yeah, so hours of work when it comes to the grading or the material processing, that is listed in the development agreement. I think it was I want to say eight to five. Don't quote me on it. It's in the back of the development agreement. Eight to five Monday through Saturday. We didn't want them, oh, eight to six, eight to six Monday through Saturday. Didn't want them to go much more than that and at least give everyone a break from, if they can hear it, which if you apply those standards, they shouldn't be able to, but if they can hear it, at least give them a break on Sundays.
Noise mitigation and a phone number to call.
So the phone number would be the the county code enforcement, which is on the website. And noise mitigation, actually, that's a good question. I know we talked about noise mitigation, but as I was looking through the standards, I see a little reference to noise, but I don't see. We usually put a decibel rating in there. My recommendation would be to ask us to do that. I I think I felt to make sure that was in there.
All right. And then the water tank?
I'm going to defer that to the applicant to answer. I don't know the answer to it.
It's underground?
Yes.
Okay. So for the record, that was the water tank is underground.
Can you maybe, is this even, maybe it is working. Okay, yeah. Can you address the short term rental again?
Yeah, so my understanding is after going back through the record that short term rentals was allowed in all of Cobab. It is still something I'm more than happy to go back in and make sure that it was carried through in the record. I don't remember what it was from the planning commission. But the the final decision, I've got the minutes that showed that short term rentals was allowed throughout. So I'll check that again just to make sure we're not wrong. And before it gets to the county commission, and if we are, we'll make sure we make that adjustment. I did have that question, and it was a big question I had. I thought there'd be a big research project that would be needed to go back and listen to all the minutes, but fortunately, the applicant had the minutes. I think they knew that we were going to ask the question, so they had them. They sent them right over to me. So and I could send them to you guys if you guys would like to see that too, just for verification.
There were some comments about if the power lines go underground, things like that.
Very unlikely for those power lines to go underground. They're high power transmission lines, very high power transmission lines. Rocky Mountain Power, they'll underground distribution lines under a certain amount of power. But where those ones are the main lines that are coming down from Wyoming to the Wasatch Front, they're they'll probably always stay above ground. In fact, my understanding is that Rocky Mountain Power would like to replace the poles that they're on if they haven't already started replacing some of those poles. If they change their mind, if rules change or whatever, and that does go underground, I think the point that the the commenter was saying was maybe we need to have a definitive standard on how far back come those lots, things can be built. We do have minimum standards for buildings that have farm animals, but they're not two hundred. It's seventy five. So that's less than two hundred, obviously. And so if if that's a restriction that you'd like to apply, we can we can apply that, keeping in mind that I'm I think the applicant would probably be okay with a lot of these things. However, there is an approved development. So just like with the conversation about bridges, if we if we tip it too far over on the other side, they'll just stick with the agreement that they have and take the take the punches as they roll in. So we just want to be cautious, but I don't think I don't think two hundred feet, at least two hundred feet for a dwelling on those big lots. That's not too much to ask.
Sorry, yes. Can you confirm that the setbacks that you have in here, though, are the ones that they already have agreement for?
Uh, yeah.
You didn't change them.
They're in the development agreement. There there might be a little bit of change for the townhomes. Just a little bit of adjustment. There was some disclarity what was in their original or the existing agreement on the site development standards. I think they if I remember right, the the development agreement said that the townhomes have townhomes have certain setbacks. And I couldn't tell if that was setbacks from lot boundaries because I wasn't sure they were going to have lot boundaries. I thought they were going to be more townhome or condominiumized where the building footprint is the lot. And so we did make sure we got into that document and clarified. Basically, what we said was for the townhomes. What the site plan shows is what their setbacks are. So. Just a quick question here to digress. On the setback for animal occupied buildings, that's seventy five feet from the existing properties above or from power lines? No, no, seventy five feet from an existing dwelling on an adjacent lot. And so even more than so it'd be a smaller amount depending on how far back those other homes are.
Excellent. And then Mr. Langford had some commentary about drainage and the storm drain project that the county was doing.
Yeah. Yeah, the county engineers have the same concerns that Mr. Langford has. Not being an engineer, I don't know that I'm qualified to speak too much on it. But the county engineers are paying very close attention. I have a big asterix or a big note off to the side that says engineering still needs to conduct their full review. They have looked at with me, with me, we did look in a meeting at the layout and where the detention basin is. They've got a number of questions, and they'll need to have those worked out with the applicant before the county commissioners make a final decision on this.
And finally, Ms. Model Mog was asking if this is a done deal.
This part of it, no, but the development, yeah, there's already a development agreement that says that they can do what essentially what they're asking for as far as those building lots go and as far as those townhomes go. As far as the roads are configured. All that is already entitled.
Thank you.
Charlie, could you clarify the maximum building height or a secondary building?
Twenty five feet. That's what the code says, and we didn't. We didn't move away from that. If it's an accessory building, if it's a main building, thirty five feet.
So if it's an accessory building and say they were going to build a residential unit within it, it still has to be.
Still twenty five.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I read the minutes from the commission meeting on November second, twenty twenty one regarding STRs? It's just one sentence. Says no STRs in Eagle Crest. STRs will be allowed in both the Exchange and Cobay Branch, including single family units.
Thank you. That was from twenty twenty one?
Correct.
I had it in my mind that we that this vote came in twenty twenty two or three. It was it was twenty twenty one?
That's what the minutes were indicating.
That's from the planning commission meeting. What minutes?
That's the county commission meeting.
So what's in your mind is when the development agreement was actually recorded? Took a little while to get that agreement recorded. But that's what's in the staff report is twenty twenty three.
Okay, any further questions on the item regarding Cobay Branch?
Actually, I'm looking at the the minutes document that Rick was just looking at. The footer on the document says November second, twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty one. But the header, the title actually says Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty three. So it looks like the minutes document itself, maybe somebody forgot to update the footer. The title says Tuesday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you. This is pre my micromanagement of the minutes then. Okay. If there are no further questions, comment for staff, then I will enter. then I will entertain a motion.
To approve ZDA 20020 25 dash one. That approval would be, uh, per the findings and recommendations of county staff with five additions. First addition would be similar language be added that was added to Bridges Agreement with respect to inspections and approval. Second addition would be that the 2.5 miles of paved path be stipulated, which is part of language. The third item would be to the HOA to maintain the 2.5 miles on a year-round basis. Fourth would be to the county add language with respect to minimal earth disturbance on, with throughout the project, including on the building lots. And the fifth would be, as said, to put some specific, specific language with respect to noise mitigation, noise statements.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Uh, on your first point of similar language to the bridges, do you mean the language that the planning commission had requested, not the language that was agreed upon?
Yeah, I think for uniformity and consistency, if the planning commission made that recommendation and approval for that development, then they should do the same thing for this development.
Thank you. May anyone have a second?
Did you want to use the findings outlined in the staff report?
Yes, yes, that's what I said. I said, per the findings and recommendations in the staff.
Could I add one more consideration as a number six? Or perhaps we can have a discussion on this gate issue at the top of the development. I'm, I'm not sure if it's necessary or if it's important enough to include it or not include it. I'd like to understand what you three understand about the gate.
Yeah, I understand the county doesn't care. You understand the developer maybe doesn't care, maybe residents above might care. And I, I'm not familiar enough with the exact flow that might or might not happen for me to say one or the other right now. I, I, what I heard Charlie say is that maybe during development and construction, it would be a good idea to have a gate, but in the future, maybe the gate wouldn't be necessary. I, I don't have an outlook opinion one way or another myself.
I would offer my experience as a resident in an upper neighborhood. Um, from what I've heard from the HOA that there is to be a crash gate, uh, I heard this morning from the developer that the crash gate is planned, but may or may not happen. And for residents, I, I think that's a closed neighborhood. I think the general sentiment for the residences is to not have through traffic on that. Um, there are some considerations of, you know, quiet and fewer, you know, fewer traffic as a resident. Um, also a consideration of, of, uh, egress and ease of access to the main roads down lower through the neighborhood. So, you know, I don't care either way. I, I think having a road would be an, a, an advantage, you know, down the road. Maybe it's a crash gate during construction until the neighborhood is developed and then it opens up.
So, so with that, with those comments, I would add to my friendly amendment that the crash gate be included until the development's completed.
Okay.
That seems reasonable.
And with that, I would second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. I'm gonna restate it since we've had some discussion here. All right, so I see, uh, a motion to approve based on the findings in the report with the addition of, uh, five additions. One is that we add, we, we adjust the language that's currently in this report to put back the similar language that the planning commission had requested with regard to the bridges, um, in terms of the title is, Charlie, it's 3.6, 0.6. Inspections and outsourcing. Uh, if we can, uh, we're requesting that the addition to that language we put back in, uh, when forwarded, when our recommendation forwarded to the legislative body. Number two is that the addition of the 2.5-mile multi-use paved pathway is included. Number three, that the HOA will be required to maintain said pathway. Number four, that we add language regarding, uh, minimal earth disturbance. Number five, language on decibel rating as far as noise mitigation. And six, language, uh, that insists on the crash gate at the end of the road.
Yes.
Okay. I have a call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right, so, uh, this item passes unanimously, uh, 4-0. Director Grover, we have. Would you like me to?
You can introduce it and all this kind of explain what needs to happen.
Sure. So our next item on the agenda is, uh, legislative item 2.2 ZDA 2025 dash 2, a public hearing and possible action for the application to amend the development agreement for the previously approved Eagle Crest development, which is located approximately at 4601 East Fairways Drive. Uh, these amendments are intended to help clarify the roles and responsibilities of both the developer and the governing body.
So this one will require another public hearing as well. You'll be the recommending body. You'll be forwarding a recommendation onto the county commission. And just like the previous item, you'll open and close the public hearing. Um, and after that, then it's back to the county, to the planning commission for deliberation on a motion.
And does this one have three options or two?
Just two. So, I apologize for that. I didn't have that information in our Thursday meeting. So, Mr. York?
Uh, thanks again. I'm back. This one's actually about the same as what we just looked at and even easier, I think. Um, so let's just, uh, jump through, uh, the differences. Um, this is the, uh, site plan that is, has been proposed for, uh, the Eagle Crest development. You've got, um, some, uh, larger townhome, uh, buildings here, uh, and then you've got some smaller townhome buildings, um, south of, of the, the road. That road, just for reference, is Fairways Drive. Uh, the county has funding and, uh, my assumption is, is that funding will go towards building that before the city becomes a city. Uh, county has funding to build from the bridge up to about this project. Um, and then from, from here on up would be the applicant's responsibility. Um, and then all the way back to where Fairways is will be the applicant's, for same applicant's responsibility for the bridges. So applicant will be building from the end of Fairways all the way down to the end of this project, once both of those projects are, are ready to go, which gives the applicant one very important thing for both bridges and for this project, and that is a secondary egress. Um, which, the agreement that you guys all looked at for the Bridges project and that the county commission, um, are, are queued up to make a decision on, says that they need to have that secondary egress before they have too many, uh, more homes in there. So that'll be an important connection. Um, the other thing to think about, uh, the applicant is, uh, eager and willing to continue to, uh, construct, uh, asphalt pathways. Uh, you guys saw the asphalt pathway that was going through the Bridges project. This project will tie into it. So this, just up in here in the corner, that is the Bridges, uh, project. And so there is a path, oh, let me get to the right spot. There is a pathway that is intended to run along, um, uh, for, excuse me, Fairways? Yeah, along Fairways Drive, um, and then up through the corner of this project and up into the Bridges project. And that's the one that you guys saw on that Bridges, um, proposal. The applicant is proposing to tie into that along the roadway here and bring that pathway down through the open space, um, of, of the, um, uh, southern side of Eagle Crest. And the, uh, it ends right here where it shows that there is a, uh, uh, shared parking and, uh, trailhead area, uh, which the staff are actually advising that it go all the way down to, uh, the, the southern, southeastern corner of the property, which is very close to the actual fairway, uh, on the golf course. Uh, and that will get them to very close to, um, uh, golf cart, uh, paths, as well as the ability in the future to connect from this 10-foot-wide pathway all the way back to Highway 158. So there's a couple of different opportunities, just to recap on pathway connectivity through the bridges. We're asking them to build the pathway along Fairways, which eventually, uh, long-term will connect into 158. And hopefully, if the county or the, it'll be the city at that point continues to, to, uh, pursue that, will connect from that Fairways Drive all the way down to where it is on Highway 158 right now. At that point, you'd be able to go all the way up, um, uh, 158 Wolf Creek Drive, uh, up to the Fairways, go all the way across, connect over into, um, Liberty Park. Um, from there, there is a plan to run down 162 as well. Uh, the county has that, uh, uh, that plan ongoing with some, uh, private residents, uh, citizens in, in a nonprofit group. Uh, we do have the funding for a portion of that. It's a very expensive connection, but you might see a really cool loop, a little triangular shaped loop up there in the Eden Wolf Creek area, Eden Wolf Creek, uh, Liberty area, um, in the coming years. Uh, and that's, it can asphalt paved pathway, multi-use for everyone to use. Aside from that, there really isn't much difference on this project at all. Um, so I'll just kinda, uh, walk you through some of the, uh, my observations. Uh, again, suggesting we put this, uh, pathway in, I actually already talked to the applicant and they said, oh, that was always the intention. It was, for whatever reason, just left off the drawing. Again, it repeals and replaces the past agreements, memorializes density of those past agreements and adds better community pathway connectivity. Um, it provides 0.85 miles linear feet, uh, oh, sorry, 4,500 linear feet of 10-foot-wide multi-use paved pathway, um, intended for public use. Um, and like I mentioned, intended to go down to, through the golf course to 158 eventually. That'll, that'll take some effort and take some time and, and some landowner relations to make that work, but the community, I think, can do that. It'll be a, a great community asset. It clarifies the site development standards and use standards, same as we did with the Kobe project. We just, um, uh, took the references out of, uh, the, uh, agreement, made sure that they made sense in relation to this project. Um, and then put them right into this proposed development agreement. Um, it makes processing and grading, uh, a permitted use with the standards that we've already talked about. It can, it continues to not allow short-term rentals. And, um, I know the applicant was, was, uh, uh, eager to make sure I knew that that was not changing. Um, and then, uh, from a staff recommendation, we're recommending, uh, approval, uh, as long as it got that extended pathway. And I would probably just add on all the other conditions that you added on to the previous one. Any questions for me? What question on 158? Uh, is there a proposed pathway to continue up 158 as a separate pathway or part of the road? Uh, well, it is, uh, grade separated like it is now, grade separated, or just the shoulder? Is that what you're asking? Well, yeah, just, it's not in a lane of, you know, vehicular traffic. So that is the intention. In fact, if you look at the, the, uh, community, uh, the general plan for, for trails, it shows something going all the way up to Powder Mountain. Now, that'll be a big lift, if it ever is possible. But at the very least, I think it is possible to get up to Fairways. It's in the plan. It's just, we haven't gotten very far on the actual specifics or how it's gonna go about getting done. All right, thank you. You bet.
So Charlie, is there any potential for this development or, or some other, or maybe the next development beyond this to, to cause 158 any modification, turn lanes or anything? So we, in, in, and I asked the question in the context of, like, old Snow Basin Road. As the developments occurred going up the road, there then became this question of, of mitigating traffic issues and who contributed what or didn't contribute. Is, is that potential for this situation?
It's a great question, um, one that I haven't specifically evaluated because we were looking at just crossover straight, one-for-one on, on units. Um, it is something that I'm more than happy to chat with our engineering division about and UDOT about as well. Um, if that's something you guys, uh, would request. There are a lot of new driveways that are gonna be going in, both with the bridges and with this project. Um, I would assert that, uh, making the fairways connection might actually alleviate a little bit off of 158, but, uh, it just depends on where people are going. We know from our general plan study that the majority of the working public, uh, that commute to work in, in the Ogden Valley, again, this is pre-pandemic, so it may be very dated. Um, the majority of them went down to the Wasatch Front and south of Ogden Canyon. So chances are they'll continue to, to try and go that way, but, uh, we'd have to run a new study to find out where the majority of the working population here, uh, from here commutes to. The other thing that I suspect has potential, once you make this connection over to 4,100 North, which is the North Ogden Divide Road, and, uh, Nordic, uh, makes the improvements that they've got anticipated, you might see a little bit more traffic on that divide. Maybe incentivizing or increasing the, uh, potential for folks in these developments to use that. So, long story short, it, it'll take a, a, a traffic study, uh, to figure out. We can ask for a traffic study. There's nothing in the development agreement says that we can't ask for a traffic study. And when it is big impact, we do ask for those traffic studies, but if you want to make sure that's in there, we can actually get that just written in the agreement. Um, one thing that we've done on other projects, uh, well, uh, on the west side, uh, is just make sure that it's clear that when increased traffic is observed at these significant intersection, intersections that can be tied to, directly tied to the increase of use of the project at that time, um, once the traffic counts are actually validated by a traffic study, we would go back to the applicant and say, hey, um, it's time for you to put some improvements in. So we've gotten that in development agreements and other places. We can just kinda copy over that language if you'd like to.
And how, how would you term that? Or how would you describe that in terms of a requirement?
Mitigation of the detrimental effects of the traffic load, um, on those, on those, uh, intersections primarily.
Just have a concern. Um, in this latest printout of the packet, um, received tonight, there, I'm not sure if you did it on purpose or I just want to bring it to your attention, but, uh, towards the back, when we had a lot of maps and pictures, it's all Kobe branch, but it is under the Eagle Crest DA amendment.
Definitely not on purpose, I know.
Okay.
Just down there.
So that gets cleaned up. Uh, and also the language on
Shoot.
It's map, which would be, I guess, page 106 of 120, page 50 of 61, um, is a map of Eagle Crest. And it has the number of units of the townhomes, bulk flex townhomes. Uh, it says 120 and it's 72 units, but it says proposed total units 101. I think you've got some confusion between Kobe.
Yeah, which, uh, which, uh, page is that?
So there isn't a page number on that specific one, but it's the page directly after page 105 of 120. Uh, it says, Planning Commission Staff Report, Eagle Crest DA Amendment, page 105 of 120. And then underneath it says Exhibit B, even though it's Exhibit K, Existing Kobe Branch Agreement, page 49 of 61.
Let me get down there and just make sure we're looking at the same thing here.
The last few pages of the whole report.
Oh, I think I might know what's happening here. Okay. Actually, a great illustration of the problem. Okay, so in the proposed development agreement, we've got the correct, um, exhibits. That's wonderful. Okay, we got that. Um, what you were looking at, let me make sure I scan pass to make sure I'm being accurate here. Okay. What you're looking at is the development agreement that has, it's the existing development agreement. It has the Kobe branch, it has the Eagle Crest, and it has the exchange all mashed together.
I gotcha. I'm, I'm so far back that I'm into the original.
Yep.
Okay, so that is what we're cleaning up because it's quite confusing.
Yep, uh, and that agreement starts on page 57.
Um, would the applicant like to come and speak?
Thank you.
Have any questions for the applicant? Right? Uh, I'll take a motion to open for public comment.
Motion open.
All right, um, all approved? Aye, okay. Anyone in the audience want to speak to Eagle Crest?
Um, I'm Megan Bowen.
Oh, that's sure. Great. Wonderful to hear from you, Ms. Bowen. Sure, great. Wonderful to hear from you, Ms. Bowen.
And we are at 4174 Sunrise. And I actually would request that before anything is approved, that there is traffic. And in light of the fact that there will be significantly increased traffic with the amount of units that are going to be added with this development, that traffic study be done to look at the impact and what that's going to mean to not just the existing homeowners and the life that we live there, but with the addition of not just the units. For instance, each unit, how many vehicles? Is it two-car garages? I mean, they look at, at what the impact is going to be to the current neighborhood with the connection of that fairway road, which my understanding is that it's currently under development and being built.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Jan Fulmer, Eden, Utah. May I please ask for clarification? I used both Safari and Google to find 4601 East Fairways Drive. Neither of those tools could find an East Fairways Drive. They found 4601 Fairways Drive, which is an empty lot on Fairways Drive, right when you turn onto it from Powder Mountain Road. Would it be possible if someone could just? And I, I like to always put the address of where development is going into Google or Safari and then enlarge it or shrink it. It gives you an idea proportionately where it is in the valley. I couldn't find this. So if there was a bigger map, maybe Charlie has it, could point out where this is. Is it related to that new road they're putting in from the fairways? That is to connect down to River Road, I believe it is. I just could not find this. So I'd really appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to comment on this item on the agenda, Eagle Crest? All right.
Close public comment?
Right? All in favor? Great. Would the planning staff like to address, we had two questions come from the public. From Ms. Bowman, we had a request for traffic study done on assessing traffic impact for the new development. And from Ms. Fulmer, a comment regarding not being able to find East Fairways Drive in search engines.
You got it. Let's do both. Regarding traffic impact study, I think it can very well and very easily go into the development agreement, including triggers on when a traffic impact analysis is going to be needed. I don't want anyone to get too invested in an expectation of what a study like that might produce. Traffic impact studies are done by engineers and they're done based on efficiencies of streets, not necessarily in my perspective on impacts to adjoining landowners. What that means is the engineer will be looking at whether or not the street can accommodate or handle the amount of traffic and they will give recommendations on what happens if they don't think it can, which is usually more lanes, widen, turn pockets, stuff like that. And so the traffic impact study itself probably won't, won't give Ms. Bowen the sense of comfort that she's hoping for here. But so yes, that can definitely go into the development agreement. I don't know if I would recommend denying the development agreement pending that or but I would definitely suggest asking for that in the agreement. So before they bring in their administrative applications, their subdivision or their site plan reviews that we know exactly when we're going to be triggering those traffic impact studies. Well, that's a, that's a good observation. Let me get in here just a little bit. There we go. So the project itself, if we could see on the map here. This is the, so here's Fairways Drive that to be built. Here's where it ends right over here. So if you go down Fairways Drive and you go down, it's kind of a rough cut dirt road. I don't even know if you could actually take a car down that. Where you get to the curb in that road just before where it joins up with 4100 North over in Liberty, that's where the project is. You got the larger townhome buildings will be going on the north side. The, the smaller townhome buildings will be going on the south side.
So that road is Fairways Drive?
Fairways Drive, yep.
Okay. I'm not sure that we'll be able to provide an answer, but we should maybe look into it. There's a couple of addresses, mine in particular, where I'm in East Fairview Loop, but the post office calls me Fairview Loop.
Sorry, when I, when I heard Ms. Fulmer's question, I thought she was more asking where it is, not necessarily is the address correct. What I did, honestly, the address isn't correct because it doesn't exist. She's right. It is just an address that I selected that was further to the west of the addresses that are on the east side of this project with the assumption that isn't a proximate address for this project. So the formal address of the project with that won't be designated until after it's gone through subdivision or while it's going through subdivision. So when those addresses will take place.
And that formal address is dictated by?
It's a coordinate grid, generally speaking. There's a lot of looping roads of this area that don't always tell you whether or not you're heading east or north or west or whatever, based on the progression of the, the numbers. But for the most part, our addressing official tries to fit it within the addressing grid that already exists.
Madam Chair, this is an issue that every municipality has when you're at a rezon level. Like Mr. York indicated, there's no address on record. And so oftentimes it's an approximate address and then a map is along with that to help.
Understood, thank you. All right. Any further questions, planning or? I entertain a motion.
A motion to approve ZDA 2025-2 per the staff findings and recommendations with the addition six, with six additional funds. Similar to the previous item number one, that the language be added similar to the bridges development agreement with respect to outside sourcing of inspections.
From the planning commission?
Correct. Number two, that the path be extended per the map that Charlie showed with the red one. Number three, that the HOA for this development maintain that pathway on a year-round basis. Number four, that the language be crafted with respect to earth, minimal earth disturbance. Number five, that noise mitigation standards be put into the development. Number six, that a traffic study be conducted with respect to the mitigation of detrimental effects from traffic with the outlook toward potentially collecting funds for some future road adjustment to 158. Development continues down beyond this current development.
Can you restate that last one?
Sure.
Six. So the intent of number six is to escape the situation that existed up Snow Basin Road, whereas developments started to pile up there. Day one, the first development didn't really acquire a change to the road or additional lane, but as they as they accumulated, then it became necessary. So the request would be that traffic study be conducted with the intent to mitigate detrimental effects of traffic into the future, whereby if necessary, funding can be collected from developments that occur beyond the intersection of 158 at the intersection of 158 to mitigate the development that will occur or to mitigate the traffic problems that could occur into the future.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I'm going to open for discussion here. I have number five that you specifically said, adding language about noise mitigation. Do we need to specify specifically with, with specific decibel level?
You could do that or you could have staff put what typically is in residential areas that we see in other municipalities where we don't actually have a noise ordinance.
Okay, I, I know I, I stated language on decibel rating in the Kobe branch on, on number five. So would you be open to? Okay. So number five here would be, as asked for, language on noise mitigation with the addition of specific decibel rating. All right. Any else, any other comments or questions about this? Or discussion on this? Motion. All right, let's call for a vote. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. This item will pass unanimously four to zero. I've lost my agenda. Moving on. Very much. All right, next up on the agenda is public comment for items that are not on the agenda. So would anyone online or in the audience like to speak about any other topic that is not on tonight's agenda? You can wait for York. All right, with no one coming forward, we're going to move on to remarks from planning commissioners. Commissioner, if you would like to speak.
I just want to comment for the record, when responding to my opinion on the crash gate between Kobe branch and the residents above, that was my opinion only. And I would defer to the HOA of respective communities to decide at the given time on the best way to move forward.
Understood. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Next on the agenda, we have the planning director report.
Just have one item. Commissioner Morby, he has some health issues and he's going to be resigning. We haven't got a formal written letter from him yet, but he said it was okay to mention that in the meeting. So I'm sure the county commissioner will be looking at a replacement there.
Thank you. We wish him a full and quick recovery. Last up here, Courtland, we have remarks from legal counsel.
Nothing to add, thanks.
Motion to adjourn? Thank you all very much for coming.